Councilmember Bruce Bassett.
Here.
Councilmember Jane Brom.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Sero.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Grady. Councilmember Dan Grous.
Here.
Mayor Jim Pierman. Deputy Mayor El Jankie.
Here. Okay, thank you very much. Before we get into our regular agenda, we have a couple of proclamations, special business. First proclamation by the city of Mercer Island is about playing. Play is a crucial factor in the overall well-being of children. Unstructured, unplanned, spontaneous and self-motivated play is on the decline. Fewer children spend time outside at parks and playgrounds. Children who play are either healthier and suffer less obesity and obesity-related health problems such as diabetes and heart disease. Children who play do better in school, develop cognitive skills that are linked to learning and academic performance. Children who play learn social skills that help them become happy and well-adjusted adults. Community partners and all interested parties wish to raise the community's children to become healthy, happy and successful adults. And those children who are aware of and play in the outdoor environment are more acquainted to sustainability awareness. Now therefore, I, El Jankie, on behalf of Jim Pierman, Mayor of the city of Mercer Island, Washington, do hereby proclaim September 24th, 2011. Is that the right date?
Sorry. No.
It's the 20th of June.
Oh yeah, it is. Yeah, that's right. That's right. You're proclaiming it in the future.
Okay. As day of play in the city of Mercer Island, Washington, I urge all citizens to celebrate Day of Play and support efforts to bring awareness of play and the outdoor environment through the play spaces and playgrounds in their communities and neighborhoods for the well-being of this and future generations. Signed this day, 20th May of June, 2011. So, we'll move on to our next proclamation. This is about Parks and Recreation. Four hundred and sixty-five acres of parks, trails and open space and over a hundred quarterly recreation activities and diverse leisure experiences provide opportunities for families to live, grow and develop into contributing members of our society. And the city of Mercer Island Parks and Recreation Department partners with local organizations to create enriching life experiences for all members of our community. And over eighty-five hundred participants partook in physical activities, arts, socialization and recreation experiences last year. And parks, playgrounds, ballfields, beaches, trails, open spaces and the community center make our city an attractive and desirable place to live, work, play and visit, which contributes to our economic vitality. And volunteers contribute thousands of labor hours supporting programming, special events and maintaining our parks, greenways and open spaces. And parks and recreation agencies touch the lives of individuals, families, groups and entire communities, which positively impacts the social, economic health and environment quality of our community. Now therefore, I, El Jankie, on behalf of Jim Pierman, Mayor of the city of Mercer Island, Washington, do hereby proclaim July, 2011, Parks and Recreation Month on Mercer Island and encourage all citizens to join me in participating and supporting the many recreation activities, programs and facilities by public and private agencies. Signed this 20th day of June, 2011. So with that, we'll move on to appearances. This is a time when anybody in the audience can address the council on any subject of their choosing, any issue. And so please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to not more than three minutes.
Hello, my name is Paul J. Crane, C-R-A-N-E. And I'm an elderly person, I'm close to a hundred years old of age. I might not look it, but I am. And I decided fifteen years ago to live on Mercer Island. Because Mercer Island was one of the very finest places in the United States available and close by that I could live in. And I came here and five years ago bought a lovely home a few blocks from here on 4047 85th Avenue Southeast. A brand-new home. It's a big home and I take care of it completely all by myself. Do a very good job, consistent with the finer homes here on Mercer Island. Mercer Island proud, I am. And I keep my home that way, even at my age. And I thought that when I bought the home that I would be fully protected by the statutes and by the codes in a strictly residential area. That is the reason I paid so much money, way over a million dollars, to buy this home in a protected area. Well, a few weeks ago, I found out, much to my dismay, that my neighbor, Enar Hanlon, who lives right across the street, decided to go into the landscaping business in a very large way. And you have the information, I gave it to Rich Conrad a few moments ago. So I won't go into all of that. But the trucks and the commotion, the flatbeds, he had the past, he said, "Flatbeds there." I'm sure you know what a flatbed is. It carries tractors and all heavy machinery. They were there in full view for all of our month. The trucks are consistent with the landscaping business. There's like ten of them at different times, coming and going. There are cars, he's using his home as a command center to integrate his various businesses, which number like six or seven, all over the area, Bellevue, Renton, so on and so forth. You have the list there, which you gave to Mr. Conrad. And so reporting this, this has been extremely upsetting to me. I bought my home on the supposition that I'd be peace and quiet, like every residential home should be. And that's not the fact. Anyway, unfortunately...
Sir, your three minutes is up. Will you please wrap up your comments here?
All right. Unfortunately, getting into this, which I didn't want to do, but I found out that this particular party, Mr. Hanlon and his son, were doing business here for many years without a license. And this opens up a tremendous bill...
Okay, sir, I understand that if you would...
For King County, for the federal government, all the way down the line. Where is this money going, perhaps millions of dollars, that the city has not collected, knowing well that he's doing this work?
Okay, sir, your time is up. Would you take this up later on with the staff, if you'd like to pursue it? Thank you.
You're interested in saving money, I'm sure.
Okay. So I will mention, we're going to have a public hearing later on this evening on the, another hearing on the shoreline management program as its agenda bill, forty-five, forty-six, forty-nine. So you can make your comments either now at appearances or later on when we have a public hearing for that agenda bills. Further appearances?
Marty Gale, 9404 Southeast 54th Street. Tonight I speak to the termination of the city manager. On Wednesday, June 15th, I attended at the federal courthouse what I suspect will be the last hearing in the Lindell lawsuit. It also appears that a nice settlement for Ms. Lindell, rather than a trial, will be forthcoming. Many in our community were looking forward to the trial, to hearing testimony from those of you on the council and the city staff who got us into this disaster. Some of us have been pulling hundreds and hundreds of pages off a Pacer, the federal court document database, which is available to the public in order to obtain information not available from any source on the island. I wonder how many on the council have been reading any of the available documentation? If you haven't, then perhaps I can present a short summary of the case. Johnny Siegel, a city employee, has a report about an infraction placed in his file. His wife is the human resource director about whom the city manager has inappropriate feelings. She threatens to quit if the city manager doesn't remove the blot on Johnny's record. Since the city manager had already solicited sex from a previous city employee and the city made a payoff for that, he doesn't want to let the city attorney, Bob Sturbank, do his job and deal with the problem, this new situation presented. This starts a chain of events which leads to the forced resignation of city attorney Bob Sturbank and the firing of deputy city manager Lonnie Lindell under the guise of a conspiracy to get the city manager's job. That's how it started, and as we know, once there's a cover-up of a bad management decision, in this case, the firing of Ms. Lindell, then others have to play the game, keep quiet or get out. What was not expected is that Ms. Lindell being very bright and very capable never was part of a conspiracy and also has the peculiar quality, at least in this building, of wanting to do what is right. She files a suit in federal court. The people of Mercer Island got stuck in this multimillion-dollar lawsuit. Mercer Island is a joke to off-islanders. Countless city hall hours were spent working on the lawsuit. We lost a parks director, other employees. Another employee of several decades was reprimanded in a letter in her file because she didn't agree about the firing of Ms. Lindell. A couple of citizens were subpoenaed and pursued relentlessly by the city at great expense and trouble for phony causes. The Mercer Island Reporter had to continue pretending it was a real newspaper and the list goes on and on. Great harm was done to many because the city manager did not have the decency to admit at the beginning that he had done wrong in firing Lonnie Lindell as a way to cover up the manipulation of a personal matter for his own personal wants. So I ask you, how much more are you going to ask the citizens to put up with? It is time to terminate the contract of the city manager. No golden parachute, no pension fattening, no special benefits, just the same termination process that Ms. Lindell received, including the escort out of city hall by a policeman. If the council is not willing to make this most difficult decision, then you should not have taken your oath of office. Thank you.
Ira Appleman, 6th U-13, 83rd Place Southeast. A tentative settlement has apparently been reached in Lonnie Lindell's lawsuit against the city, Rich Conrad, Jim Pierman and El Jankie, for violating federal and state laws against sexual harassment and retaliation. The city refuses to reveal how much they're going to compensate Lindell, but this lawsuit is likely to cost millions of dollars. The Mercer Island Distorter, based on an apparent conversation with city attorney Katie Knight, erroneously reported that federal judge James L. Robart had ordered the parties not to discuss the settlement. Judge Robart has emphatically denied issuing any such gag order. The city has been operating from the usual handbook of miscreants. First, the city claimed that there was no merit to Lindell's suit. Next, the city claimed that their lawyers had instructed them not to discuss the case, but they were eager to get the matter before a jury where they were confident they would prevail. In fact, the city has stalled this case for two and one-half years, including being the first city council on Mercer Island history to violate a federal court order. More recently, the city made wild and false claims that Lindell had purposely destroyed evidence, which turned out to be absolutely false, but stalled Judgment Day for another several months. Since I last spoke on this subject, Judge Robart has released the 2003 Uncensored Stephson Report. In 2002, city manager Conrad solicited sex from a female employee, city clerk Tina Eggers, at an off-site conference. Conrad admits this under oath in video depositions that are now posted on the web at www.sexandmi.com. Eggers refused Conrad's solicitation and reported additional inappropriate behavior from Conrad over the next fifteen months when she filed a sexual harassment complaint. The city hired Amy Stephson to investigate the complaint. I've been trying to get the Stephson report since 2005, but the city has refused, however the judge released it. Instead of Conrad being fired, Eggers was forced out. Current councilmembers Dan Grous, Jim Pierman and El Jankie were part of the city council that approved these actions. This incident happened on Jane Meyer's watch as editor of the Mercer Island Distorter. I'm currently beginning to circulate the Stephson report to islanders, who can decide for themselves whether the actions of the city council and city manager are consistent with island values. I'm calling on the city council to publicly apologize for the shoddy and unethical way they've operated in these sexual harassment cases. I'm also calling on this city council to invite Ms. Eggers back into these council chambers, publicly apologize to her, and provide such additional compensation commensurate with the shoddy way she was treated. The current law has completely failed in these cases because it relies on the city council and city manager to investigate themselves. At an appropriate time, I intend to petition the Washington State Legislature to change the law and end this abuse.
Anybody else like to address the council?
Good evening. I'm Alan Foltz, I'm a permit coordinator with Waterfront Construction. One of my clients, Ken and Robin Phillips, 1945 82nd Avenue, has requested that we permit for some dredging to help remove the sediment and silt that's generated on the north end of Mercer Island. You have a lot of the information that I've presented previously. I want to thank you for including Point B in your alternative recommendations here that were prepared by Tim Stewart. And I feel that Point B, which allows for a narrow exception to dredging in fish spawning areas, if it can be conclusively demonstrated that the fish habitat will be significantly improved as a result of the project, is an appropriate way to adjust the SMP codes. You have documents that I presented already where Washington State Fish and Wildlife have documented that the north end spawning potential on Mercer Island has actually been declining over the years. They've actually recommended that the proposal that I've made for the dredging would be a potential enhancement to return spawning to the area. In fact, in their letters which I've presented to you, and believe additional copies here, he is recommending, this is Larry Fisher of Fish and Wildlife, has recommended that the city council revise the SMPs to allow dredging in spawning areas where it is documented, approved, and where it receives core and WDFW approvals, as well as any other agencies. I've already spoken on this project with Karen Walters of the Muckleshoot Tribe, and she was supportive of it. I've already spoken with the Department of Ecology and they're supportive of it. So I appreciate very much your consideration and hope that you'll approve the request that I've been making consistently for weeks now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to address the council? Okay, appearances are closed. Let's proceed with the minutes. We have the special meeting minutes of June 2nd. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have the minutes of the study session and regular meeting of June 6th. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Al, I'd like to pull forty-six, forty-seven off the consent calendar.
Okay, we'll do that and address that as the first item of regular business.
I move to approve the payables and payroll.
My second.
Just have a quick question on that, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Mr. City Manager, I saw we have an insurance bill, 1500, for the underground storage tank. Where are the underground storage tanks that we have?
Tim, are you about to answer that? Is that, no, that's not why you got up. You know, I'll have to go back and ask the maintenance department. I suspect that's at the fire station.
I think that's correct. I believe that's correct.
I think that's the only underground tanks that we have left.
Is that an old one?
It's been there for many years. I believe we may have replaced or at least attended to it when we did the new station rebuild. It's in the back of the station.
Mike Grady, you have an item?
Yeah, Rich, there's a line item I noted. Let's see, it doesn't have a page on these things, but it says, "Parametrics 2011 Sewer Backup Action." It was a significant amount, seventy-one hundred dollars, or no, fifty-four hundred dollars. Is that associated with Lake Line or is that a backup in somebody's home?
I just have to check. It could be either, more likely, it's just out there in the system and not the Lake Line, but it could be either.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion seconded on the payables. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we'll move on to Agenda Bill forty-six, forty-seven, Pioneer Park in Southeast 53rd Open Space Vegetation Work Bid Award. Do you have a question or...
Yeah, I said a question. That's all for Bruce, I guess. The recommendation is not to do alternate A, which I understand the reasons for that, but if I recall correctly, when we were doing the budget for this biennium, there was a fair, fairly significant carryover from the preceding biennium that was going to be spent in 2011. Is that, where does that figure into this? Is that, was that included in the budget for this or what happened to that carryover?
Bruce Fletcher, Director of Parks and Recreation, and I apologize, Paul West is feeling ill, so he is not here. Yeah, the carryover, that's part of this, the whole budget that we have, and it was prioritized like in the opens, or the work plan that was before council, and this is what we could afford, and so it's kind of prioritized.
So, but this number does include the carryover?
That's my understanding, correct.
Okay. Other comments, questions?
Bruce, I'm sure this is more for Paul than for you, but I'll ask it. I was just curious, in looking at the two maps, to understand the scope of work area. So I see in Pioneer Park, PPO 511B, color seems to match up. And then it looks as if virtually all of 53rd matches up in color. Is that, is the intent that the work area includes all of 53rd or is that a slightly different color and I just can't tell?
The area ID number again? I have a list of everything that's going to happen, so if you give me the number, I could tell you what the activity scope is.
Well, I guess, I believe it does actually include all of 53rd.
It does.
I think that's the plan. Okay. Well, what I'm looking at is, there's this little block within Pioneer Park that seems to match the color of project over here, but then 53rd seems to match the same color. So the question was, is 53rd all involved in the project at this point?
That I'd have to get back to. I don't know the answer to that unless city manager Conrad...
I hold the bottom line on it, but I believe it is.
Okay. I can, I'll get back to you tomorrow.
I'd be curious to have that conversation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we need a motion to take some action on Agenda Bill forty-six, forty-seven.
I move that we award the base project of Pioneer Park Southeast 53rd Open Space Vegetation Work Project to Northwest Landscape Services LLC in the amount of $167,595.23. Set the total project budget at $203,320 and direct the city manager to execute the contract.
Second. Second. Discussion, further discussion, comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving right along here, our next Agenda Bill forty-six, forty-one, Island Crest Pedestrian Signal Bid Award. We don't have a presentation, so...
Mr. City Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
That we award the Island Crest Way Pedestrian Signals Project to judge electrical construction in the amount of $249,352. Set the total project budget at $395,248 and direct the city manager to execute the construction contract.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, moving right along. It's our next hearing on the shoreline master program update, and we're going to be focusing on new overwater structures and dredging. And this is a public hearing, if I'm not mistaken, so why don't we start with that? Would anybody like to address the council on this topic? Okay, public hearings closed. All right, Tim, you're on.
Thank you. Tim Stewart, Director of Development Services Group. This evening, we're going to be talking about the overwater structures, new overwater structures and dredging. And I thought it'd be helpful just to recap where we've been. On April 25th, we had an introduction and overview. On the 2nd of May, we had the formal public hearing. On the 17th of May, we did existing overwater structures and the council directed staff to add additional standards when there was a complete replacement. Last meeting, we dealt with landward structures and landscaping. Tonight, we're talking about new overwater structures, all with the intent that at the August 1st meeting, you'll be taking action on the resolution of intent to adopt and authorizing submittal to Department of Ecology. On the 17th meeting, the major issues were development standards for the maintenance, repair and complete replacement of existing overwater structures. And as I mentioned, council direction was to add development standards for complete replacement. At the meeting of the 6th, the major issues were building setbacks and impervious surfaces, landscape standards and the maintenance, repair and complete replacement of legal structures. Council direction was to advance the Planning Commission recommendations and also to accept the draft language from the week before regarding overwater structures. Now the next steps, tonight we'll be dealing with the new overwater structures. August 1st, we'll be looking at a resolution of intent to submit, and then we have our submittal to the Department of Ecology. That submittal will involve a very extensive compilation of data and information, filling out a checklist, which is about 28 pages long, and then submitting that to Ecology. Ecology will review that in total and get back to us with comments. And then I expect that following those comments, there will be negotiations before council is asked to finally consider the final amendments to the code and the adoption of the SMP. So the purposes of the meeting this evening, there are basically four. The first one would be to talk about the dock width, and it is the minimum dock width, not, as mentioned incorrectly in your staff report, the maximum dock width. Thank you, Jane. Dealing with the issue of covered mortgages, the issue that you heard earlier of dredging. And also, the last item would be to provide council members with an opportunity to further discuss any other issues. For example, council member Grous was not here last week, so if he had any additional questions from last week, this would be an appropriate point to bring them up. Basically, the council is dealing with two big options. One is to adopt the Planning Commission recommendation. The other alternative is to direct staff to develop alternative language following council's policy decisions. So the first issue up tonight is the maximum width for new docks. And you've seen the slide before, this was in the orientation. The Planning Commission has recommended a dock width, a maximum dock width of eight feet. There's also been discussion of a maximum dock width of six feet. And then the Department of Ecology recommendation is a maximum dock width of four feet, within the first thirty feet from the ordinary high water mark, with six feet thereafter. So the bookends of the two alternatives are the Planning Commission recommendation of the eight feet, or the Ecology recommendation of four feet within the first thirty feet of shore and then six feet beyond that. The second issue for your consideration is the issue of new covered mortgages. And again, this was debated extensively at the Planning Commission, and the basic two alternative that you have in front of you are to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation, which allows new covered mortgages, but with extensive standards, including translucency of the material. Or to move in a different... of the material, or to move in a different direction and prohibit new covered mortgages. Dredging in fish spawn area, I think this is an issue that sort of flew below the radar with the Planning Commission, and the way that the current regulations are drafted, dredging in fish spawning areas and in our underwater forest is absolutely prohibited. There's no exceptions to the rule, and as you heard earlier, there is one case where it might be appropriate to consider an exception, and that would be if there's appropriate mitigation done so that the dredging activity would leave the fish spawning area in better condition than it was today. I put up a quote from Larry Fisher, the Fish and Wildlife Area Habitat biologist, who in an email to a citizen has stated that "It does seem appropriate to me to revise the city's SMP to allow dredging, provided it is done in the appropriate window and adequate mitigation is provided." So again, the two alternatives basically in front of council would be to go with the Planning Commission recommendation of prohibiting any dredging ever in fish spawning areas, or to allow an exception if there is habitat improvement. Other issues that council might wish to address would certainly be appropriate this evening. This is sort of the last meeting that we will have before coming back to you on August first, and if you have additional input, want to provide us with additional guidance, or have additional questions, this evening would be the appropriate time to raise those. Picked out this slide because this is a really good example of what we would hope, over time, the Mercer Island waterfront would evolve into no hard, hard bank frontage, soft landscaping, as well as landscaping underwater, or in the water.
So does this, just, if that's what you would hope for, tell me, is that's what's required under our regulations?
Depending on the situation and the circumstance, yes, many of these elements are either required or encouraged.
Well, I didn't ask you that. I said, we're, I mean, I'm just, I find that a beautiful picture, and I couldn't agree with you more. Then I read the regulation, which talks about twenty-five percent of an area has to be, have vegetation cover, and of that, twenty percent is natural vegetation. I forget exactly the percentages, but it doesn't look anything like that. So I'm just, I just, I just see this picture, and I'm wondering, what part of the regulations does this refer to?
Well, there are a couple that this, this image could be referred to in the regulations.
Such as?
Well, one is that the landscaping requirements are minimums that are required, not maximums, so that individuals have the freedom to enhance more. The second one is that there is a provision in the regulation that allows for permit exemptions when you're removing a hard bank frontage, so that you don't, you don't have to go through a permitting process to do a soft bank restoration. The second provision that encourages it is there's a, there's a hold harmless provision, so that if you are changing the water line and the ordinary high watermark is moving, that the setback or buffer requirement does not move with the high watermark. You're held harmless for changing the ordinary high watermark.
In Lake Washington, you're worried about the high watermark changing?
Where the high watermark lands on the ground could change as you roll back a frontage. You could be rolling back a hard bank. If the water level is here and you roll it back, the water level can move landward, and if there weren't that prohibition, it would discourage people from moving into a soft bank restoration.
Tim, question on that picture. That property was conditioned based on a federal permit, it's my understanding, not on local regulations. So I'm with Dan. I think, you know, we need to be truthful in what we're selling here, and as you look through the changes that the Planning Commission and you have proposed, nowhere in those changes do you get there. The only way you get there is if you go and get a permit from the federal government.
Well, as the regulation, as...
Tim, let me suggest this, before we get too far into this. There are three main items we want to address tonight, and let's take them one at a time, if we could, so we can be a little more organized about this. So the first one is new dock widths, or the width of new docks. Now, the context, let me remind everybody, is for new docks, not existing docks, and the Agenda Packet indicates that as of today, over, I don't know what future period of time, we're likely to have eight new docks over the next...
Well, we're liable to have eight new developable lots.
Okay.
However, there are a number of existing properties that do not now have docks, so that number could be larger for new docks in the future.
Okay. Again, this is for new docks, and let's focus now on dock widths, or the options that Tim has outlined up on the screen, so...
Three good questions.
Yeah, let's start with questions, and then we'll get into council debate. Questions, then? Mike Grady.
Tim, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Question on that line there, so who owns the property from the land out to the end of the dock?
George? Parcel boundaries go to the high watermark, or they extend under the water in Mercer Island?
Typically go to the ordinary high watermark.
So the property typically, as George says, typically goes to the ordinary high watermark.
Okay, so the water portion of that cartoon is owned by the state of Washington, as part of a waterway of statewide significance. Is that correct?
I believe it is, yes.
Okay. You want me to hold on the buffers, because they fold into the dock, or how would you like to proceed on the dock?
Are they related, new docks here? I mean...
I had a question about new docks.
Mike, one more question.
Yeah, just, yeah. Tim, I'm curious, how do we, at the last meeting, we were talking about forty-plus parcels, and now we're down to eight. Can you clarify that for us, please?
Yes. After council's meeting last week, we went back and took a look anew at all of the vacant developable parcels that are on the island, and we have, back in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and nine, sorry, the Planning Commission did a similar exercise, and they went through and they looked at every single parcel, parcel by parcel, around the island, and their conclusion at that time was that there were ten lots that were buildable. I'm not sure if we provided council with the raw data on that, but we'd be happy to, showing you each and every parcel on the island that is not, doesn't have a structure on it, and many of those are not buildable. They can, they're little slivers of land, or they're in public ownership, or for whatever reason, they don't have likelihood of being developed. There are ten that did have likelihood of being developed, and following the short plat that was approved a few months ago, that took two of those away, leaving a balance of eight parcels that have development potential in the future. And we'd be happy to get you the maps and the data, if you'd like.
Thank you.
Jane?
Oh, yeah, I just had a question about, well, looking at the docks. Most docks on Mercer Island don't look like that. They go out, and then there's a platform.
That's correct.
In general, the narrower portion from the land out to a platform is narrower than the eight feet, I think. I mean, is there, is there an average? Is that, is that how the eight feet was calculated?
Yeah.
Because to account for a platform out of...
Well, the average dock width, and this is data that was presented to the Planning Commission, is slightly less than eight feet.
And it's probably average over the whole...
George, do you want to contribute to that?
For the record, George is our principal planner. It's actually, you had a great point. It's actually really difficult to measure the total width of it, so we had our GIS analyst take a look at aerial photos and exclude the L shape of it, or something that looked similar to an L.
Okay. Thank you.
So, just following up on Jane's question, so what we're dealing with here is not the platform at the end of the dock, we're dealing with just the, call it the ramp, or the thin area between the shore and the actual dock where people are using for swimming, or sunbathing, or whatever they want to do at the end of the dock?
Well, we're dealing with both.
No, and the eight feet issue is only dealing with the thin neck that goes out, right? And you're not dealing with the floating platform at the end. George is shaking his head, but maybe you...
Yeah, gentlemen, speaking.
I mean, that's what the statute says. The statute says maximum eight feet does not apply to boat ramps, lift stations, or floating platforms. So the floating platform, I assume, is the piece at the end of the dock, at the end of the walkway?
Except it's rarely not floating. I mean, it's rarely floating. It's a fixed end of pier.
So, then in answer to Jane's question, what this is now saying is that if it's a fixed pier, then even at the very end, it's maxed out at eight feet?
The maximum width of the dock itself would be eight feet. That's correct.
All the way to the end? So you don't have any more, just a platform at the, something at the end where you can just sunbathe anymore, basically?
Unless, and this is a big unless, you choose to proceed under the alternate development standard, which is authorized under a different provision, that requires approval from the Army Corps and Fish and Wildlife, and you can seek an alternative standard to the, to the minimum standards that are outlined in the code.
So, but I'm just trying to understand this, because the, the maximum length of a dock on page seventeen of Exhibit One is a hundred feet. Is that correct? I mean, that's what it seems to say in number D there.
Yes, with the exception when you have shallow water, and you can't get the depth of the water, you can go beyond the hundred feet.
Do we have any place like that on the island?
Yes.
Okay. And then the maximum width is eight feet, but the, so the, and then I look on page twenty-two, and so that tells me that the surface coverage area, the moorage facility width can be, can go up to a thousand square feet or less for three or more residential property owners, so the only way that actually applies is if you're in shallow water, is that what that means? Because that, the maximum would be eight hundred feet inside shallow water, other than in shallow water. If I look on page seventeen, but on page twenty-two, apparently tells me I can go to a thousand square feet.
That would be the standard, but there is an alternate development standard that's identified on page twenty-four, under Section B.
Right, I understand that, but that's, but assuming you don't go under the alternate, the alternate, all these rules can go by the wayside if you can satisfy the alternate.
That's correct.
So, but that really, in a normal course, you're not dealing with the alternate development standards, you're dealing with the regular development standards. I mean, that's stating the obvious, but...
Actually, there have been many applicants who have chosen to get, to go to the Army Corps and Fish and Wildlife and get permission from them to build larger or different shaped docks than are established under the RPG III standards, which is the eight-hundred-and-forty-square-feet limitation.
So, the immediate issue here is the width of the dock, and apparently, our issue is that Ecology has suggested that, at least in the beginning of the dock, it be narrower, and then it's allowed to get wider. Does, what does Ecology say? If you were to go with a four feet, six feet in your slide, would Ecology let you go wider than eight feet as you get farther out?
I'm not sure. They would certainly be happy with the four feet and the six feet. I'm not sure if they would, what their response would be on wider than six feet. They've told us that their preference are their...
No, I'm talking about in the first, I understand the first thirty feet. I mean, that's, but, so what Ecology is asking is for four feet within the thirty, first thirty feet, and then six feet beyond that.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and why specifically are they asking for that?
I think their rationale is that the narrower the dock, the less their impact is on light and less impact on fish habitat.
And what, how did the Planning Commission conclude to the contrary?
Well, the Planning Commission looked at all the evidence and concluded, I think the actual words are in the staff report, and the findings of fact, but they concluded that they didn't find that there was a significant negative impact for, between a four-foot graded dock and an eight-foot graded dock, or four and a six and an eight. They thought that that was not, that there was not evidence to support a conclusively finding that that was detrimental to fish.
And what is the adverse impact on the homeowner from having to go to, stay at four feet, if, for at least the first thirty feet? What is, what, what is the, what are we trying to protect the homeowner?
Well, there's been a number of citizens who commented during the Planning Commission process that they preferred the wider dock for mobility purposes. I know that there was some reference to ADA about, in terms of making sure that people could access it with changes of ownership and aging population, and I think that that's, you know, the status quo, and they preferred to stay with the status quo.
Is there any suggestion that a wheelchair could not get through on a four-foot dock?
The issue with the wheelchair, I think, has to do with whether there was other equipment on the dock, or if there was more than one wheelchair on the dock.
So the concern is if you have two wheelchairs passing each other, you couldn't do it on a four-foot dock?
Or equipment, and the safety issue of being, you know, in a wheelchair and the narrowness. I was telling you what the testimony was.
Do you agree with that testimony?
Well, I think it does have some merit, but ultimately, it's a policy decision for the council.
Okay. Mike Grady, you got your hand up?
I do. Back on docks, Tim. Let's get to the no net loss of function, which is the overriding requirement within the shoreline master program, and I'm curious how we get to no net loss, because you did a cumulative effects analysis, which set the baseline for all of the structures out there today, and now you're saying that we're going to build upwards of eight new docks sometime in the future, but we're not going to build them per the Corps and no officery standards, we're going to keep status quo, which means whatever you build is going to take that baseline and have a negative slope to it. So I'm curious, how do you turn that negative slope into a positive slope, and you end up at a minimum at no net loss, if you're going to build on all of those eight properties? And as soon as you touch those functions on those eight properties, you're going to lose that functionality, whatever that may be, for fish habitat?
Well, I think that there's a couple things to point out. The first one is that the new docks, whatever the width, would meet the new standards for materials and construction, so these would not be the same old docks that we've seen in the past. Also, as docks are replaced with the new material standards the council put in a few meetings ago, there would be a net positive impact as those docks are replaced over time. And there are other, other positive, positive impacts that the city is proposing as part of the overall shoreline master program that would have net positive impacts cumulative over the next twenty years. Whether that meets the standard or not, for the Director of Ecology to approve it is, remains to be seen.
Tim, as there, again, here, there was a mention of bass populations, and that caught my eye. Can you explain that a little bit, because in your write-up, you say, "Planning Commission received and evaluated huge amount of information related to the impacts of light and shade on salmon and bass populations." Are we concerned about the impacts to bass?
The relationship between the salmon population and the bass populations was debated extensively at the, at the Planning Commission, because the bass are predatory to the juvenile salmon.
Right. Any discussion of pike minnow and other salmon predators?
There may have been.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Mike, let's give Bruce a shot here. Bruce, you got some questions?
Thanks, Al. Just a question about the number of lots that we may be talking about here. We, I know we've sort of gotten the sense that this has boiled down to a very small number of them because of the fact that there are very few buildable lots, but did we, did staff take a look at how many lots there are that have homes but don't currently have docks and such that the homeowner might at some point decide, "I've changed my mind about not having a dock and have decided I'd like to have one"? Because it seems to me this applies as well to those.
Yes, you're absolutely right. There is some number of, of properties that currently do not have docks that may, over the time, choose to add one. And I don't know, staff, do you know, does that number come to mind?
We'll look it up.
I think, I'm going to guess here that we've got a total of 900-plus lots on the waterfront, and I think I remember that the total number of docks is in the 600 range. Well, let's, let's let them dig up the facts, but there is a, there is a significant number of existing parcels that, for whatever reason, do not have docks now and may choose to add docks in the future.
Okay, so we're actually talking about something that could have impact on hundreds of lots?
Could be a couple hundred, yeah.
Rather than just eight or 10?
Yes, yes, yeah, and I want to make sure that it's not just the new development lots. That's more important for the last week's discussion, but the new docks, there could be more.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mike Sero.
Thank you, Councilmember Jenke. Tim, when people ask for, when they want to put in a new dock or renovate a new dock, that's kind of redundant, but they want to put in a new dock, do they do it themselves? Do they go through the regulatory process themselves? Or all in all, in general, we're at a point of regulatory, of rules and regulations at all different levels? I mean, they're going to have to get an outside consultant to do that. We don't have islanders doing it by themselves, do we?
Well, we would never preclude an individual from attempting it.
Of course not, of course not, but the reality is that it's hired out.
It is a very complex system of permitting because you're dealing with not only the local regulations, but you're also dealing with the state and the federal regulations.
Right, and these folks, right. Explain to me again the difference between RGP III and the alternative development standards.
RGP III is a, an area-wide permit that had been issued that sort of has captured the, this imagination as the appropriate standard for new overwater structures. However, and that outlines, many of those things are outlined in the draft regulation, the 400 square feet and those types of things. However, we have received evidence and testimony from applicants that very rarely will the Army Corps require 100% of all of the conditions in the RGP III, and will often allow flexibility or deviations from that for allowance of size, shape, materials, whatever the case is. So while there's the standard, there's also some flexibility that's apparently being offered by the, by the Corps. And one of the concerns of the planning commission was that we not establish a standard that would preclude that flexibility if it meets the standard with the federal and state governments.
So it's for cookie cutter docks in general, for to streamline the system and get your paperwork in and out and be done with and get it, get it built?
Well, we certainly didn't want to be duplicative.
But that's what the RGP III is. It's for basically, it's for cookie cutter, very straightforward docks.
Yeah, it establishes a standard, and the theory is if you meet everything in that RGP III, then you do not have to go through an individual permit with the Corps. I understand, I don't know this for a fact, but I've heard that there have been very few permits issued under the RGP III. Most have gone the individual permit route, although similar to the standards outlined on the RGP III.
And typical of Mercer Island homes, we have very few cookie cutter type homes, if you will, and there, one of the challenges that you have, that the city manager often reminds us from a Manning perspective, is that many of the folks, many of the islanders who go to you for permits on their homes add a lot of personality into those plans, right?
Personality would be a very good description.
Okay, and you can probably extend that desire onto docks?
Yes.
Okay. So by accepting the RGP III standard, we're basically not giving our citizens the opportunity to express themselves in the docks while staying within the no net loss policy that has been dictated by the legislature?
Yeah, the, again, the theory is that on page 22, you have the development standards for new docks, new moorage facilities, and all of those conditions that follow along after that or within that section closely replicate standard of the RGP III or issue standards that the Army Corps has consistently issued. But then we have the optional standards, and under the optional standard, the must be approved by both Corps and Fish and Wildlife to avail yourself of the optional standard.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Mike Grady, another question.
Clarification. Tim, the permit from the Corps is a consultation, correct? So the approval authority is with the Corps as they consult with the federal fishery agencies?
I really, I mean, that's sort of up there in the world of the federal agencies, but I think you're correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess we've had our questions asked and answered, hopefully factually. So would somebody like to start our comments here and how you feel about the, or what approach anybody would like to take on handling dock widths? Various options have been laid out for us by staff, A, B, C, D. We're not restricted necessarily to those, but where are we?
Well, I'll launch, and you can anticipate where I'm going to land on this. The four-foot dock width came out of many a consultation by the Corps. And what they're striving to do is get as much light to the nearshore environment so listed salmonids, chinook and steelhead in particular, as they migrate along the nearshore, are not persuaded to venture out into deeper water where bass and pike minnow are waiting for them to forage. So that's one issue. The other issue too gets to this no net loss function because, we'll talk about this more tonight, but really pay attention to the details of the math here because if we're going to stick to the eight foot as opposed to the four, you know, we're 50, you know, we're more than double, in many cases, what we're looking at as minimum requirements. And also the recommendations by the planning commission, which aren't in this package, only are asking for 40% light passage as opposed to 60, which we typically get with the Corps recommendations. So I would recommend that we go with the recommendations from the Corps and from ecology so that at least we have a chance to get close to no net loss and function. With the eight foot and some of the other provisions we're going to talk about later, you'll soon see we won't even come close.
Okay. Mike Sero.
Well, I would like to, I'm for the eight-foot dock, or I should say, I am recognizing that islanders, and it's a significant number, it sounds like it might be 200, 200-plus islanders that may want to put or have the opportunity to put a new dock. And just like all the other homes on Mercer Island, they're going to want to express themselves in their dock. You know, they're not going to want an RGP III cookie cutter dock. And I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with minimizing and not being redundant or restrictive on what our citizens can do. RGP is a cookie cutter design. If we adopt the standard, the standard of an RGP, then we're basically not giving our citizens flexibility and working with the Corps through their consultant, which that's the way they do, that's the way you have to do business in the reality of, of the different levels of regulation, to build the dock that they would like for their house, for their property. And let's talk about no net loss on two bases, and again, a reason why I'm very comfortable in sending this up to higher standards to give our citizens the flexibility to negotiate on site-specific design. When we talk about no net loss, again, we need to constantly remind ourselves, this is, and I'm going to quote from here, "This is a cumulative, this is an impact analysis must be done on a system-wide basis, system-wide basis, logically the geographic boundaries of the involved local government." And we, at the last meeting with Director Stewart, we drilled him on the many things that we're doing as part of practice on the island that will increase or that are on the positive side of the no net loss ledger. And I'm not convinced that four-foot, six-foot, eight-foot will have an effect one way or the other on our ecological situation here. And I'm not the only one here, and I'll quote from our Finding of Facts that's published in our packet, and it's very enlightening. Again, the design commission, of which everyone on this council was very impressed, both working as a group and individually on their resumes, after careful consider, this is Finding of Facts, which is in our packet, after, this is paragraph 18, "After careful consideration of all the facts, the planning commission is unconvinced there would be a net loss of shoreline ecological function in comparing an eight-foot graded dock with a four-foot or six-foot graded dock, and has concluded that no scientific or quantitative relationship between residential dock coverage and significant smolt survival has been conclusively demonstrated." So I don't know, why would we want to restrict our citizens from it, from the design that they may want? Why would we want to limit their flexibility? I don't know, just to do, I suppose. And so for that reason, I'll ask that we're not more restrictive. I'll support a motion that we're, where we're not more restrictive on our citizens and the design of their docks.
May I ask a question? Tim, I wanted to ask a question about the, the grading. Somebody mentioned 40% light penetration versus 60%. I'm not clear about that.
Yeah, I think, George, you want to take that one?
Oh, Mike brought that up, yeah.
The Army Corps of Engineers was requiring 60% light transparency in the RGP III standard. And as mentioned earlier, typically, most applicants weren't meeting all of the RGP III standards. There was very few permits issued from that. And one of them that was frequently difficult for applicants to meet was that 60% lights transparency. So my understanding and talking to a number of professionals that have gone through the application process with the Corps frequently and talking with the Corps, 40% was typically acceptable with some sort of additional mitigation such as planting up on the shoreline. So the recommendation was something that people could achieve and that was getting accepted.
But George, the 40 that they went down to was with a four-foot and not an eight-foot, correct?
I haven't looked at all of those permits, so I couldn't answer that question. I do know that that is a standard that was typically being allowed through the Army Corps of Engineers, like I said, with some mitigation. I'll take your word if that's true.
We do have a number, and on the number of lots that do not have docks, residential. And if you want to look at the details, this is in the shoreline analysis report, pages 144 and then 149. There are currently 945 parcels, residential parcels on the island, and there are 678 docks, residential docks on the island. So there's a theoretical potential of 267.
Thank you.
Just theoretical.
And if I could just ask, I know we were into comments, but I'm going to piggyback on Jane's question if I could for just a second. I know we heard testimony that the transparent dock surfaces were structurally dubious, dubious wasn't the right word, but somebody complained that they weren't very, I don't know, rigid? I don't know what, exactly what they're concerned about.
Requires more infrastructure to hold them up.
Yeah, and so I'm curious if there's a staff reaction to that, and then I'm going to, it's a two-part question. The second part is, and is this 40 or 60% measured as an overall on the dock, or does that only apply to the sort of small areas in between the beams you'd have to have in order to support this, this semi-transparent surface, such that what you end up with is actually less than 40 or 60 because we're only talking about that as a fraction of the surface?
So the latter, the most recent question, it is measured on an overall dock trans, light transparency.
Okay, so it's, it's, it's counting the edges where presumably there are beams and there's no light transmission as a part of the total?
Yes, and I believe that was one of the issues. So there was kind of this theoretical, certain products with 60% lights transparency or something close to that, but...
But you'd actually need to have a higher light transparency in the middle area if you're going to then balance the fact that you've got zero light transparency on the edges. So these products must actually have quite a high transparency, I would imagine.
It's going to be significantly high, relatively significantly higher than 40%, exactly.
Or 60, if you're using something that's achieving the 60.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, and do we, do we have anything that tells us whether these materials behave acceptably in response to this citizen concern that they're structurally questionable?
So we have, and I wish I had a picture, I was looking at one today, someone who was re-grading or redoing all the decking, and they had to get a permit from the federal government as well. And so originally, we approved an exemption that had stringers on the side and one down the middle. So they had to, because of the Army Corps of Engineers, had to add some transparent decking on top of that. And to your point, exactly, they had to add two more stringers down the, down the underside of the dock that holds up that decking in order to be able to support it.
If I may, real fast, just to give a sense, I need to do a disclosure, so I live on the waterfront. So just for the council's sake, I mean, they're not a pushover at Fish and Wildlife or DOE. I mean, they will, they will tell you, Corps, I'm sorry, I said DOE, actually, what, okay, the Corps, right, the Corps, okay. I mean, they will direct you to route your plumbing and your electrical work underneath the beam instead of the easier underneath the grading. So I don't want the council, sorry, Tim, I don't want the council to get the impression that you go up to hire and they rubber stamp it. They, the consultants that go forward representing our citizens, they really have to earn their money in designing something that's going to get passed by these folks within their requirements, and we don't have to be, we don't have to pile onto that, those requirements.
Okay, so we've been, I'm assuming there are no more questions, so...
I would like to comment on that though, because it gets to an earlier issue we talked about in having double standards. Because if you know that, you know, per your comments, Mike, the majority of these applications are not going to be the cookie cutter approach, which then defaults to a consultation with the Corps of Engineers and NOAA fisheries, why would we present the illusion like that photograph that somehow you can get something easier than what you would be able to do with Corps and NOAA fisheries? And so that's my main concern here is, you know, it's truth in advertising. It's, you know, one, let's be honest about what the science is, and two, let's be honest about what really can be permitted. And to assume that somehow an eight-foot dock is going to get permitted by the Corps and NOAA fisheries is not based on fact.
Okay, Dan.
So I also, what comes as no surprise, that I would prefer going with a different standard. I actually would be willing to support a compromise on... I actually would be willing to support a compromise on this that I think makes sense, and that is doing four feet for the first 30 feet and then broadening, widening it out to eight feet, where I think it's, people would want to be out there for, as a swimming platform, or platform maybe the wrong word, a swimming dock, or to just picnic out there, or whatever they want to do at the end of their dock, that's fine. I think that'd be very difficult on a four-feet surface, but it'd be much, an eight-feet surface would facilitate it. But to get the first 30 feet at four feet width, I think from everything that I've seen so far, would have a significant positive impact on the fish, which is ultimately what's driving these regulations. And it's, from the standpoint of competing interests here, you know, the whole purpose of what we're trying to do is make sure that we are able, that our citizens are able to build usable docks, which they can fully enjoy and fully take advantage of, while at the same time trying to create a balance with protecting the environment. You know, the reasons given for going to four feet, I don't think even Tim can defend those with a straight face. And I don't think that any of us can defend those with a straight face. The idea that we're concerned about ADA on the docks, sure, I want to make sure that someone with a wheelchair can go out in a dock, but you don't need an eight-foot dock to go out on a wheelchair. There's nothing in the ADA standards which requires eight-foot corridors anywhere in public buildings. So the notion that we suddenly require eight-foot corridors on a dock in order to meet the ADA standards is, for lack of a better term, laughable. And that's what's being used to justify something that at least a fair number of people firmly believe creates an environmental hazard and an environmental risk. Now, I can read the same language you can, Mike, about unconvinced and it's not demonstrated. And it's almost when I see those words, it's like what people say about global warming, it's like, it's not proven beyond a shadow of a doubt that the world is getting warmer and what's causing it. But I think anyone who looks around knows that there are things happening out there in the environment. It's no secret that the number of fish that are out there now is significantly less than what it used to be. And I'm not saying that it's all due to docks, not for a second. But you make incremental steps in protecting the environment, and where you can make an incremental step without significantly impacting our citizenry, then there is absolutely no reason not to do it. And so, you know, we can get a balance here. We can try to move towards a balance, which says that during that, in that first 30 feet, where the salmon are spawning, where the salmonoids are, I don't even have the right term, where the salmonoids are, whatever, thanks, Mike, whatever they're doing there.
You're trying to remember a song, I know.
Yeah. If we can help that out in any way, shape, or manner, without significantly impacting islanders, then why don't we do that? And it's, there's nothing, there's nothing which has been brought to our attention here which says that eight feet for that first, that an eight-feet width for that first 30 feet is essential? Islanders may want to express themselves in their docks, but I suggest to you, Mike, that they can express themselves after the first 30 feet without compromising their ability to express themselves. And in so doing, we can still do a little bit more to protect the environment.
I'd like to chime in here on, I respect what you say, Dan, about the ADA. I do think it is a reality that accessibility on docks is important. I worry with a four-foot dock coming out from the land, you know, watching children play and running up and down a dock, I can see, a four-foot dock seems narrow, but I do think that there's room for compromise here. I would think a six-foot width would be acceptable. But I just, knowing the activity on docks and kids running and dogs and back and forth, having only one, a four-foot width is pretty narrow.
Okay, we have now four proposals offered up. So Bruce, do you want to go for a fifth?
Let's see, my stance remains the same. I respect what the planning commission has done. I think that the time is not right for us to have the knock-down drag-out that's going to come with this in the end, but to the extent that we can move smoothly to some compromise now, I'm happy to support that. So, you know, I'm here kind of looking at where we're landing at the moment and seeing, I would certainly support it if Jane thought she could turn six into something that we did across the board. Moves us a little bit closer to where Mike and Dan are trying to go, and makes life a little bit easier when we get to the DOE, I think. So I would support a six-foot width. But if we're not there, I'm not going to have a lot of heartburn about it right now because I think the right time for us to really debate this is, as staff has recommended, after the DOE has had a full look at what we've got coming from the planning commission. And at that point, we will have very hard discussions about this.
Okay, Mr. Darrow.
Yes, I would like to make a motion, Mr. Deputy City Mayor.
No, no, not me.
Acting mayor, that'll be easier.
Go ahead, have at it.
Thank you for recognizing me. Mr. Deputy...
Whatever you are.
L.
L.
L, you can call me L.
I'd like to retain the planning commission's recommendation of an eight-feet minimum dock width, understanding that federal and state permits may require a narrower width, and I can speak to that.
I've got to be a second.
I know. If I can get a second, I'll speak to it.
Well, I'll second it.
Thank you. So Bruce has a very good point, Bruce has a very good point about this negotiating process.
My question paused, it looks like we're having a question. Let's move on.
Traditionally, they refrain from making motions, but they're also allowed to make motions, so, but he can certainly second the motion.
It's just bad man.
I mean, okay, so in addition to all the comments that I've made, Councilmember Grouse, I'll read from the finding of facts. The studies most specific to South Lake, Washington, bass predation concluded that residential dock shading was not a significant factor. The commission received and evaluated a number of comments from waterfront property owners supporting an eight-foot maximum width. We don't want to unnecessarily burden or tie our citizens' hands on these regulations. And to Councilmember Bassett's point, in this whole process, which Director Stewart talked about briefly at the beginning of his presentation, we're going to come back. Once this is proved and goes to DOE, it's going to come back where there's going to be negotiating done. I mean, if you negotiate your fluff, if you will, now, then where are citizens going to be after we negotiate? So we don't want to give up the, we don't want to give up the House now. Go with the eight-foot, and as Councilmember Bassett suggested, when it comes back as the normal process, we'll have an opportunity, this may be an opportunity, a place where we'll have to explain to our citizens that we had to compromise. You don't want compromise now necessarily, especially on something as ambiguous, the costs and benefits as ambiguous as this, as documented from our planning commission. Thank you.
Okay, the motion is proceed with the planning commission's recommended eight width, eight-foot maximum width. It's been seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three, one, two, three. Opposed?
Nay.
One, two, three, motion fails. Okay, so let's proceed with, maybe, let me suggest, Dan's put out a, quote, "compromise" of four feet for the first 30 feet and then eight feet, and then Bruce has proposed just a straight six-foot width.
No, I merely piggybacked on what Jane had said, which was that she was proposing a...
Oh, yeah, Jane was, and you suggested you could support that.
Yeah.
So, why don't we focus on those two proposals, if that's okay, and have further discussion?
I'd like to second Dan's proposal.
Yeah, I think, if I can speak to that, Jane, you know, I hear what you're saying on the, on the kids running back and forth. I mean, I think to some extent, if parents are concerned about that, that they'll put barriers on the sides of the dock to deal with it. But I'm not sure, to be honest with you, that four feet versus six feet is going to make a huge difference from a safety standpoint, particularly when it comes to kids messing around. It is, it is, what I'm trying to do is get to a compromise, and, you know, we know that the position of ecology in the Corps is four feet. At least if we're willing to demonstrate that we're willing to go there on the first 30 feet and then try to get it wider, farther out, then, you know, I think we've got something to talk to them about. Because my guess is that what they're going to get really hung up is on the first 30 feet, and that's where the pressure point's going to be. So it's, I hear what you're saying about six feet, but I'm just, I think that a four and eight versus just a straight six is something that will actually serve the interests of islanders more because it gives them a wider area farther out.
If I could ask our resident salmon dude here a question, it would be, assuming that you ended up with the same dock width over, or the same dock area overall by going four and then eight, or by going six the whole way, what's your sense of which you prefer? And I assume it's Dan's proposal because you've supported that, but I'm curious to hear your further thoughts on that.
Well, the critical issue is the nearshore habitat, and that's what we're trying to protect with the minimum dock width, so that we minimize the amount of overwater coverage. I mean, that's what we're really talking about, minimizing that overwater coverage. And moving that overwater coverage, the shade, out into deeper water so that the salmon, the chinook and steel in particular can migrate and hang out in those nearshore environments and not be worried about bass and pipe minnow and other predators eating them up. That's really, in general, what the Corps and the federal government, working with the state and ecology, is trying to do. So typically, what we did, matter of fact, we did this with the 520 bridge, where they wanted to build a dock underneath the 520 for the replacement of the bridge, is we negotiated with them, moving that dock out into deeper water so that it gave the sockeye, chinook, and steel had an opportunity to migrate along the nearshore. So in answering your question, to what extent we can have minimum overwater coverage within that 30 feet, that's really what we're shooting for in terms of ecological function.
Okay, I guess I was prepared to go for a compromise on a straight six-foot dock. I do think Dan's proposal's intriguing, though, because it certainly maximizes the dock area, the usable dock area. One factor I think is significant is, that we haven't talked about, is that the end of a pier, if you're going to moor a boat, a sizable boat, a boat that is bigger than one that could be held off a pier with mooring whips, and are you all familiar with what mooring whips are? There's a limit to the size of a boat that can utilize mooring whips to hold a boat off the dock. So an issue for mooring a larger boat at the end of whatever width pier is being able to put some pilings out there to accommodate the moorage. And up on the screen there, you see moorage widths, and on the eight-foot version there, there's a couple of pilings shown there. And that, I believe, is all about mooring a larger boat, or to assist in the mooring of a larger boat. Anyway, I guess, I guess we focus it down to two proposal here, Dan's four feet for 30 feet, and then eight feet, and then there's the straight six feet. Is there further discussion on those options?
Let's see, now, if we don't decide on anything on this, there seems to be interest in the group, and I don't think the council understood that there are over, what, 240 homes that this may affect. If we don't come to an agreement at this meeting, then it would be the August 1st meeting that would re-T this up, I presume. So maybe this is, maybe this is an issue that we should punt until the next meeting and kind of let it percolate in the community.
Thoughts, further ideas?
I guess, L, I'm curious to hear your further thoughts. I mean, you mentioned that Dan's idea was intriguing, but you didn't really circle all the way around and explain how mooring, whatever they are, pilings tied to Dan's idea versus the six-foot idea. And so I was just, I wanted to ask you to elaborate.
I think that applies whether it's six or eight feet. I probably shouldn't have gotten us off on that tangent because we want, I want us to focus on dock width and, you know, focus on the two options or proposals we currently have on the table, it seems. They're not motions, I understand, but...
We do have a motion on the table.
Yeah, L, I don't... Wait a minute, which motion on the table do we have, Valley?
The four to the... Dan's proposal was made and then Mike seconded it.
Okay, so we do have that option on the motion.
It wasn't actually a motion. Mike just said he seconded it, but I guess, we can do it as...
It wasn't formalized as a motion, I don't think.
I'll be glad to do it as a motion, a motion for four feet for the first 30 feet and eight feet thereafter.
Second. Okay, we do have it on the table. So I guess it's, this...
Option E, then.
Right.
Alternative E.
Yeah.
Right.
L, can I address your issue, because, you know, I think it's a good one.
You do.
I don't know that Dan's proposal precludes that from happening because, you know, the number of piers may be dictated by the design of the structure. And if you're out to eight, you know, out at 30 feet, then you may have enough pilings in order to accommodate what you're talking about.
Well, if I'm not wrong on this, pilings are another issue, and it seems to me when you get out past 30 feet, individual pilings can't be that big an impact on salmon, or little salmon, whatever you... Yeah. Okay.
Well, I'd just like to, since we're at the discussion phase, just emphasize what Councilmember Brown said. I mean, four-foot ADA aside, with kids running and this and that, and keeping in mind that the water on this lake is hypothermia temperature nine, 10 months out of the year, four feet, that's a relative balance beam. And I won't, I won't be supporting that because it's not safe.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
So that's five-one. Passes. All in favor? Opposed? Well, we know, Mike, Darrow. Okay, moving right on to new covered moorages.
Essentially, the issue is whether new covered moorages should be permitted with standards and detailed specifications, or whether they should be prohibited. Planning Commission found that a number of communities were allowing new covered moorages, and with specific conditions, including the light transparency.
Okay, can you briefly summarize the conditions for new covered moorage? I know that one of them is that it be constructed in a north-south orientation.
That was a Department of Ecology recommendation.
Okay, that's not the planning commission, though.
That's not the planning commission.
Okay, but you're referencing, planning commission recommends that covered moorages be permitted subject to specific standards. Generally, what are those? No skirting, is that right?
Yeah, I think that the key is on page 19 of the regulations. Covered moorages on single-family residents, subject to the following: maximum height above the ordinary high watermark is established at 16 feet. above the ordinary high watermark is established at 16, uh, feet, 16 to 21 feet, subject to the specific criteria. Locational, uh, requirements are identified in Figure A. This is the triangle so that they can't, um, go right up to your neighbor's property. Uh, building area is 600 square feet, however, covered moorage may be built larger than 600 with a tri, within the triangle, subject to a shoreline conditional use permit. Covered morriges shall be open, uh, on all sides, uh, pro, prohibited in semi-private recreational tracks and non-commercial recreational tracks, i.e. the clubs, and translucent canopies are required.
Okay, so I guess that's it. Questions for staff?
One question. Tim, you'll recall when we did our three-hour tour, as Gilligan's Island had it, uh, around the lake, that we went by at least one covered, uh, um, moorage that was quite large and the, it was in the first part of our trip. I'm curious whether, if that fit within the triangle, it would, something that large would be permitted?
George, you want to help me on this? On maximum size-
Forgive me since I, you know, I'm, I'm alluding to something that we don't have specifics on here.
Yeah, I don't know the specifics of that one. So there is, there is the, um, size limit, um, that's, I believe, consistent with the current standards. The other thing that's, and I think that gets to your question, the other thing to remember is that the Planning Commission, um, added what was previously in the standards years and years ago, which was, um, you can't move that triangle around. Uh, in the, in the past, you know, you had to have a, your triangle centered, but now people were moving it like this because the angles didn't have to be the same, so.
So the, um, this area calculation is on page 21. That shows you the diagram. Uh, my suspicion is that, that we do have some covered morriges that are, uh, very old and were built before the regulatory standards were in place and they, um, those types could not be, new types of those could probably not be done under the current regs. We'd have to get more specific though.
So you think this triangle approach would successfully limit that? Because that's my concern is that what we saw was a, was a very large structure, I thought, and I'm sure it was, it had to be far larger than 600 square feet. And I wonder whether somebody, um, you know, could effectively maximize their use of the triangle and end up with, uh, a great large, um, if they chose to, covered area out there. There seems to be no cap on it as long as you stay within the triangle.
Yeah, George, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's a function of the length of the waterfront. So if you have a very large waterfront, you're, uh, you've got a much bigger triangle, smaller, uh, frontage on the water and you have a much smaller area to work with. Is that correct? Come on up.
Again, I don't know that specific example, but you are capped at 600 and you have been for a long time. It's possible that that one was, the one that you were looking at was grandfathered in. I don't know the age of it.
If I read, sorry, if I read page 19 correctly, it says 600 square feet, however, covered moorage may be built larger than 600 within the triangle. So it, it appears to say you are not capped at 600.
Yeah, with a conditional use permit, so it's possible they, they got a conditional, which isn't easy to get.
Yeah, conditional use permit is actually approved by the Department of Ecology. Um, unlike our local conditional use permits for land use activities, a shoreline conditional use permit goes through a very rigorous process and ultimately the decision maker is ecology.
Okay, so I shouldn't see that then as a, as an easy way around?
It's not an entitlement. It's a rigorous process.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, um, Tim, I, I got a question. Um, when we're talking covered moorage, uh, is this new covered moorage or would these also apply to existing covered morriges?
Um, no, if we go with the recommendation, um, of the council meeting, uh, the first council meeting, new covered morriges, uh, this would cover new covered morriges.
Okay, that's, we're just talking long term.
Existing overwater structures would have to meet the new standards.
Okay.
And not meet the, all the, would have to meet the new material standards.
So, can I, question? I'm just trying to understand, the 600 square feet, if, if you were a single property owner, could you go beyond 480 square feet based on 22? Based on page 22? How does, I mean, how does that 600 compare with the, the 480 on page 22?
Yeah, you'd be in the alternate, uh, approval process for anything over 40, 480 on a covered.
So that, that's, so that's clear to you that that's-
Yeah.
That 600 doesn't somehow conflict with the 480?
Not, no, it's clear to me that if we're going over that, it's, um, you're going to have to get an alternate approval from the Corps and Fish and Wildlife.
Okay. Also, the, um, I, I didn't realize a shoreline conditional use permit was a state permit. Is, is there any definition of that somewhere that would tell someone? I mean, that's, that's not, I just assumed it was one of our conditional use permits.
Yeah, it's, um, Exhibit 3 in your binder is the, um, procedural standards that are being proposed for changes and... Process, if you go to page, this is page 40 of, um, you can see a shoreline conditional use permit. The decision maker is the code official and the Department of Ecology. And the Department, and that's footnote number three, which states that must be approved by the Mercer Island prior to review by Ecology pursuant to the WACs and the RCW. And then the appeal of that decision doesn't go to our hearing examiner, goes to the shoreline hearings board.
So it looks like in the first instance, it's made by us and then it goes to ecology?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's not, it's not just, because I, I got the impression from your last, your last response to, I forget who it was, to Mike, that this was purely an ecology issue?
Well, it goes through our process first. We make findings of fact and conclusion, but then that goes to ecology and ecology ultimately, uh, has the authority to approve, approve with conditions or deny. So we don't make the final decision in that.
Okay, any other questions? Mike, zero.
I have a question. Director Stewart, can you explain about the north-south? Uh, if we, if we, uh, go with the Planning Commission's recommendation, what are they recommending about the north-south orientation of covered morridge?
Uh, they're not. There was a comment that was received from the Department of Ecology of preference that the moorage facility be oriented in north-south again, uh, I assume because of the light, southerly light, and they want it to be in north-south as opposed to in east-west.
Okay, I would, uh, this isn't a question, so excuse me. Uh, I'm concerned about that, especially with this triangle, especially considering that this island is a north-south orientation and our dock should be going primarily east-west. Um, that DOE is, is sensitive in how, whether that's practical or not on the majority of docks that, that would be built on this north-south island. Thanks.
Okay, Mike Grady?
Actually, a follow-up to that. So, Tim, we've approved going from four feet, uh, for the first 30 feet from ordinary high, uh, then out to eight. Um, what, where can you start to put the covered portion of that dock? I can't remember what the distance from ordinary high was.
It's in here, give us a minute.
Oh, sure, that's fine. Thank you.
Look at the triangle, looks like-
I, I know that this was a subject of discussion at the Planning Commission, if you can-
I didn't think they put any restrictions on it.
Yeah, I couldn't, I don't recall any and, and the reason why I'm asking, it gets to this previous discussion we had where to what extent we can minimize that overwater coverage within that first 30 feet to minimize the amount of shading?
It looks like on the, the diagram, your triangle on page 21, it looks like you can bring the, the, um, covered moorage all the way to the high watermark.
If I may, I, I think there's a couple of reasons for that. One is, they're gonna, they're gonna, if they want a boat, they're gonna bring a boat on, for their dock. And so if they want the boat, because of one reason or the other, close to shore within that 30 foot, they're gonna put that boat. There's no restrictions of where you can put that boat. So I think what the Planning Commission thought was, well, it's better to have a boat inside that 30 foot that's on a lift than one that's just sitting on for the, for the shadow purposes, rather than having a boat that throws off more of a shadow if it's, if it's not on a lift. And the second thing is, is we've got to really be careful on not doing, again, making general rules or on what the, the geography is on where their folk, where the folks can put their lifts. Uh, my lift is equal to my neighbor's lift. My boat is out of the water, no problem. Equal, my neighbor, on the other hand, uh, is very deep, same amount of distance out, is very deep where he has it. And I just wait for a wave to wipe that boat off of their lift. So in a case like that, you wouldn't want to handcuff the citizens out there to put the lift closer in, uh, than, than what I, seems like is being suggested by the council outside the 30 foot.
Travis Andrews gets the gold star. He found it. It's on page 23 and it states that only, uh, only piers, ramps, lift stations may be within the first 30 feet from the ordinary high watermark. That's, uh, item four on the middle part of page 23.
So the covered section needs to be beyond 30 feet?
That's correct.
Okay, very good.
And given, I guess, that, that we're talking about a restriction on dock width, um, the old covered or boathouse version, it would not be possible today and what I think we're alluding to is a translucent cover on a boat lift. So this is independent of dock square footage, it seems. Am I correct? The question, uh, the, the statement I made in the form of a question is that, uh, the dock width limitation means that covered moorage is a translucent cover on a, a boat lift and the boat lift does not count as square footage on the pier.
Could either be a boat lift or it could be part of the structure. There, there are, uh, covered morriges that are actually part of the, um, part of the structure.
But are the permit conditions or the specific conditions that you refer to in A, 2A, is one of those conditions that it, the coverage is translucent?
2A, what page are you on, Mike?
Oh, I'm, I'm just on page three of the agenda bill.
Page 19, it says specifies under F, item F on the covered moorage, translucent canopies are required.
That's good. And, and Tim, if I could take you back to, uh, the text that Travis found on page 23?
Yep.
And forgive me if I just don't understand the language we use here, but I don't see dock in the language with, as to what's allowed in the first 30 feet.
Pier.
So, so pure, pier equals dock in this case?
Yes.
To, to avoid confusion on that, wouldn't it make sense to then change your picture on page 21 so you effectively have the base of the triangle out 30 feet? Otherwise, you've got a arguable inconsistency in your ordinance where you've got, on one hand, they, you tell them that you can put the covered moorage within the triangle, on the other hand, we're saying that's really not true because you can't be within 30 feet of the high watermark.
Good point. I think we can probably come back to you on, um, August 1st with a revision to show that.
I think, I mean, unless anyone in the council disagrees, if that's, if that's the intent, I think we should make the two-
It would certainly sharpen the regulations so, and remove any ambiguity.
Makes sense? Okay, I think you have enough head nods to go forward with that.
Let's, we'll, we'll take a look at it. If there's a problem, we'll let you know.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so, we've got two options laid out for what to do with covered moorage and, uh, do we want to focus on those two? Um, and I guess what we, if we, unless we totally prohibited covered moorage, and I'm not hearing comment to that effect at the moment, we want to retain the Planning Commission's recommendations that new covered morriges are permitted with specific conditions, along with the, uh, change that Dan has just suggested that seems to be acceptable to-
I'll second that.
Dan's only clarifying. Do you second Dan's?
It's, it's not a motion. We're talking again. Dan is throwing out ideas at this moment.
Yeah, I'll, since Mike wants to second one of my motions, I'll be glad to do this. I, I would move to retain the Planning Commission's recommendation that new covered morriges are permitted with specific conditions, um, and with the caveat that Figure A be amended to, um, reflect the 30 foot from the high watermark requirement. Oh, Mike was going to second already. That's all right, let the-
She beat you to it. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That sounds like 6-0 to me. Okay, dredging, so, um, I'm going to jump in with a question before, right away. So, um, it's, it's detailed out the conditions. I mean, uh, 3A, you're saying retain the Planning Commission's recommendation that all dredging and fish spawn areas be prohibited without exception, and yet I'm looking at paragraph eight on page 24 and it doesn't seem to say that. Oh, it did, I guess 8DI is prohibited in fish spawning areas.
Yes, that's the, that's the prohibition. It's an absolute-
And then based, and based on that email you just put up from, uh, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, uh, they don't seem to have an objection if it's within the right window or what?
Yes, um, they say is done in the appropriate window, which is, uh, standard for everything. Everything's got to be done in the fish window, uh, and adequate mitigation is provided. Um, I would suggest that an alternate wording might be something like to add after D1, "Fish spawning areas except when dredging will result in a positive impact on fish spawning areas." So it's not neutral, it's a positive.
Mr. Grady? Oh, okay, wait a minute. Uh, hold-
Well, I've got, I've got a question.
Question, okay.
And then I'll get to the comment. So, Tim, Larry's referring to Sauk eye spawning, is that correct?
Uh, yes. And we, those are the spawning areas that we have mapped on the island or Sauk eye spawning areas. We do have maps if anybody would like one. Guys want to see where they are?
Sure.
Probably a Mike stock.
Thank you, yes.
Actually, for the last six years, I haven't seen any.
There's a reason for that. That's right.
Well, the reason is because they're all going along the Seattle Shore.
No.
More than a theory, it's what the studies show.
So, Tim, if I could ask a couple of questions after you. Get back.
Sure.
So, um, we did a lot of restoration work at Luther Burbank Park, which included, um, creating gravel spawning, or habitat, I guess, that was, was, uh, supposed to be conducive to salmon- spawning, or habitat, I guess, that was supposed to be conducive to salmon spawning. And, so, that's a comment. And then, we also, as I talked to a citizen the other day, have a lot of problems with mill foil and changes to the underwater environment elsewhere in the lake. We also have, you know, if you look on land, lots of issues with invasive species and things where the environment gets damaged with blackberries and ivy and stuff like that. I don't have a very good sense of what's going on underwater, and even what it means that, you know, we've had a gentleman here who's talked about a dredging project, but I have no sense in my own mind of what that is. Can you maybe speak to the specifics of what's envisioned there, and why it would be a good thing for him to do, and why we should be looking at dredging as, you know, not always just a bad thing to do, but within this greater context of what's going on underwater with respect to invasive species and creation of spawning beds? So I'm asking a very big question here.
I'm certainly not an expert in this sort of thing, but the, my understanding is that dredging is often required in order to get adequate depth to get your boat in, so that you need to remove materials so that you don't bottom out. And the language that's in the current code is holdover language from previous code, so it really wasn't looked at, it was just sort of carried over. The notion would be is that when you have a dredging project to get bigger boats, you know, into shallower, what is now shallower water, that as part of that project, you'd also be doing underwater habitat restoration, putting in gravel and those kind of things to make it a better place for the fish as you remove those sediments.
Mr. Grady.
I got that right?
Can I make a suggestion? Because we're using fish in the, kind of the generic sense here, and sockeye, just to be real clear, are not listed on the endangered species list, but chinook and steelhead are, and so they're listed as threatened. I would suggest that, similar to an issue that we did at the last meeting, if somebody wants to dredge, that they are, be required to get a federal permit. And here's why, because it may or may not be chinook or steelhead spawning areas, and it's gonna be hard to determine that, but if it is, then you've got an issue under the Endangered Species Act of what they call take. And in order to do that, you'll need some form of a consultation in order to issue potentially what's known as incidental take. And we don't have the authority at the city to be able to do that. So my suggestion is, as opposed to kind of wading into this issue, is defer it to the federal agencies that would then come in and do the consultation with the applicant, and then make a determination of when they could do it. And, you know, we typically do allow dredging within certain work windows, but I don't think it's fair to put our staff in a position where, you know, you folks are trying to make a determination, one, of what species are present, and two, what the potential adverse effects to their habitat would be.
Well, dredging does require federal and state permits, and the case at point, the one where Mr. Fisher issued this opinion, was that they would be ready to issue the permits, but our local restriction is, our local regulation is more restrictive, so they wouldn't be able to issue the permit because we flat-out prohibit it.
So, Tim, would you read again that initial language that you suggested in modifying 8DI?
Yeah, and this is just a first shot, but to create, this would create an exception to the prohibition that you can't dredge in fish spawning areas, and it would be words something to the effect of "except when dredging will result in a positive impact to fish habitat." So it's not just a, it's not just a neutral, you have to demonstrate it's a positive impact.
Should that be the dredging and mitigating actions?
The dredging project.
The dredging, so the whole?
Project.
Okay.
So, a positive, it's, just saying a positive impact is a little bit different than a significant impact, which is, well, in your agenda bill, you're saying that the fish habitat will be significantly improved.
Yeah, if you want to include significant.
Can you put the word significant positive impact?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, if you'd like to have that.
It seems to be that the whole theory behind this.
Tim, I would agree with you with the wording in the agenda bill, but I would also add on the condition that a federal permit is required. So the applicant understands that it's, that's not a determination, you're not gonna make the determination that the habitat's been significantly improved, that'll be, that'll be the federal government.
Well, that covers all of our regulations. All of our regulations are subject to federal and state. I mean, we, that's, that's pretty clear. If you wanted to, you could also say, unless approved by the federal and state government.
Yeah.
So it would be.
You're happy with that?
Fish spawning, except when approved by Army Corps of Engineers and Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife.
Well, no, 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 no. I don't think, I mean, you can add.
Let's read, let's read that again.
Because you gotta have a significant positive impact in there somewhere.
Okay. So we could combine them both?
Yeah, so what I'm suggesting is, the wording in B, where you say, "allow for an exception to dredging fish spawning areas," if it can be conclusively demonstrated that fish habitat will be significantly improved as a result of the project, and the applicant has secured a federal permit for the action.
Why is that any different than the process? The process already is that we'll get a federal and state authority or permission to do this, correct? I mean, I'm, no offense, Councilmember Gray, but I'm looking for the ambush, I'm looking for the ambush on this, on the wording on this.
For you to provide the ambush?
What's that? What's that?
For you to provide the ambush?
No, 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 I'm looking for the, I'm looking for the, I'm looking for the well-meaning citizen out there getting ambushed through the regulatory process of that wording.
Well, that's gonna happen regardless, I mean.
Well, the. This is just saying, except where approved by Fish and Wildlife and CLE.
Yeah, I think that, in my mind, the significant positive impact, or whatever the term is, your desire is, is important, because it sends the message of what we're looking for as opposed to a broad, open-ended mitigation, whatever. That mitigation word gets used a lot, and sometimes it's very confusing, so I would like to have a measurable that a biologist comes in and says, yes, this is a significant positive impact on fish habitat.
But that would be in excess, that would exceed our charter of no net loss. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think that they're gonna have to demonstrate that to the feds and state anyhow, and I don't think that, I don't think it would create any more hardship than the hardship that they'd have to deal with.
Can I suggest that, I liked the point that was made earlier, that it would be difficult to put our staff in a position of trying to evaluate what constitutes significant positive improvement, and perhaps the language ought to be, except when the dredging project will result in significant positive improvement as determined by the federal authority that has to look at it. Isn't that what we're really looking?
No, 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 we're just, because they don't necessarily have any standards for doing that.
But we don't, how do we have standards for doing that?
Well, that's, but we can create them, but if you, I don't think you can tell the federal government what the, how they should issue a permit. I mean, if you look, if I can suggest, if you look on 8E right now on that page, it says, "disposal of dredge material shall comply with ecology, water quality certification process, and U.S. Army Corps of Engineers permit requirements." Couldn't you just say, "both dredging and disposal of dredge material shall comply," and that just picks it up? So if you just do it that way, then you, then you could just deal with, back in D, small i, just the issue we're talking about in the agenda bill. So if you say in E, dredging and the disposal of dredge material.
And get rid of DI?
No, in DI, then you'd say, "fish spawning areas, unless it can be conclusively demonstrated that fish habitat will be significantly improved as a result of the project."
Okay, so, that sounds like it'd be worthy of a motion, Mr. Grady.
Now, Jane, calm, let me get this one.
Okay. I would add after the end of, on page 24, Section 8D sub i, add the language, after the word areas, "unless it can be conclusively demonstrated that fish habitat will be significantly improved as a result of the project."
Where'd that conclusively come from?
Significantly proved. Unless, well, I'm taking it from the agenda bill. Unless it can be, I'm just copying the words from the agenda bill.
Significant, yeah, let's do with that one.
Unless it can be demonstrated, I, I'm not worried about conclusively so much, unless it can be demonstrated that fish habitat will be significantly improved as a result of the project.
I'll second that.
Let me finish my motion. And, and also amend Section 8E to add the words dredging and the at the beginning of the sentence.
So it would read dredging and the disposal of dredge material.
Right. I'll second that, too.
Okay, further discussion?
I just want to make sure, so staff's comfortable with this concept of evaluating and determining whether there's significant improvement?
Yes, the way it would work in, from a practical point of view, is that there would be an assessment by a biologist who would submit that assessment to us, and we would concur with that assessment.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Looks like another 6-0. Wow. Okay, so, we wanted to, one other item we were gonna cover is from last meeting, June 6th, I guess, Dan, do you have further, do you have any questions or comments regarding what happened last meeting?
Well, Tim and I talked about this earlier. Perhaps, maybe, Tim, you could give a quick recap of where we were at the end of the last meeting, what were the topics that were covered, and then, sort of promised, Councilmember Grouse a chance to provide his input.
Yeah, this is the, the major issues that were discussed last time were the development standards for maintenance, repair, and replacement of existing overwater structures, and landscaping, and the buffer and landscaping. Oh, wrong meeting, wrong meeting, sorry, sorry, here we go. That was the June 6th meeting, right?
June 6th, yes.
I watched on TV.
Very good. So the major issues are building setback and impervious surfaces, landscape standards, and the maintenance, repair, and complete replacement of legal structures. The Planning Commission had recommended that a building setback of 25 feet be allowed with impervious surfaces, and I can go through those if you'd like, the details of that. Landscape standard was, the formula is proposed by the Planning Commission, and they suggested the complete replacement of legal structures be allowed. I do have last week's PowerPoint here, if you'd like me to.
I did watch it on TV.
Okay. So the issues, major issues would be setback, impervious surface, landscape standards, and complete replacement of legally conforming structures.
Yeah, and my, I, you know, I watched the debate, as I said, I just, if you could put that picture up again, that you did at the end of this PowerPoint, today's PowerPoint. Yeah, that one. Yeah, I, to me, that, that picture sort of speaks a thousand words, because that's, if you look at that picture and you look at the paragraph on the bottom of page 22, our requirements don't look anything like that picture. And if that's the goal, then one has to ask why we would pass an ordinance which doesn't look anything like the goal. So it's a question I think we need to ask ourselves, is to, what are we really trying to achieve here? If we understand that having a lawn which can cover 75% of the area, going all the way to the water line, has some significant environmental consequences to the lake, because you end up with chemicals going into the lake with no buffer at all to try to mitigate them, if we're willing to accept that going forward, then we should adopt the statute as we've adopted it. If we're willing to say that, you know, we don't need to have the lawn run all the way to the lake, that we can understand that there is a good reason to create a vegetative buffer, a real vegetative buffer, not a lawn, that goes along the shoreline for the obvious reason that you're trying to protect the shoreline from chemical runoff, then, then we should say that, and that's what we should put in the statute. And it has nothing to do with ecology, it has nothing to do with federal permits, it has nothing to do with that. It's like, it is, if we can, just for once on this discussion, say, if we were the only agency, if we were the only governmental entity which was looking at this, and what we would do in order to protect the rights of our homeowners, while at the same time protecting the environment, which is so critical to ensuring those rights are maximized, then where would we draw the balance? And we would draw the balance on that picture. We wouldn't draw the balance, I submit, we would draw the balance on that picture, and we would pass an ordinance which would increase the likelihood of achieving that picture. And we would not pass the ordinance which is at the bottom of page 22. Now, I, first, I wasn't here at the last meeting, so according to the rules we've always operated on, I've got no right to reopen a discussion, but I, you know, I, at the August 1st meeting, when this will come up again, I will, I will make this point another time, and I will ask, I will make an amendment proposal at that point, unless people want to discuss this further now. But I, you know, I listened to the whole discussion last meeting, and I don't know whether you had the same picture in front of you at that meeting, I don't remember that, but this picture should, should, should make all of us ask that question of, you know, do we realize that this is not good? If someone follows the law, that's not what you get.
Excuse me, per your order, we're not, we gave Councilmember Grouse the courtesy of speaking in that he missed the last meeting, but I, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I don't intend to listen to all the council members debate this, and I don't want to debate this again.
No, we're not gonna debate it again tonight, that's for sure, but we gave Dan a chance to.
I have no problem with that, and.
And you had something you wanted to add?
Well, I guess I'd like to just say that we have to remember the island is pretty well-built the way it is, and I, I think this is a wonderful example of what we can encourage. Most of the bulkheads are done, but we can encourage homeowners to remove their, their concrete bulkheads, and we can do that, and we are doing that by our regulations.
Just point of order. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I thought we had just made a decision, we're not gonna debate it.
Yes.
And we're gonna wait until the first of all.
We're finished now with this agenda?
Because otherwise, I'd love to.
Knowing that, we would re-debate the whole thing, we're gonna say, "not tonight." Okay, so, moving right along, we have one other agenda item, and that's the Planning Commission work plan. There's no presentation, you've seen it, it's in the agenda packet. If you have questions or comments, now is the time, and George would be happy to answer Hearing none, seeing none, I guess we're okay with the proposed Planning Commission work plan that's been presented, so. So, yes, somebody make a motion, please, to.
Move to, Mr. Acting Mayor, move to accept the proposed 2011 Planning Commission work plan.
Second?
Further discussion, any discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, we're done with that item. So then we, let's move it on to council member absences. According to, from last meeting, Councilmember Grady and Councilmember Bassett are gone on July 5th, still a case, and I guess, Bruce, you're gone also July 18th.
I am.
Okay. Anything, anymore? Any others? Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to excuse our esteemed leader?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Planning schedule, any comments, questions? Rich, do you have something to add or comment on?
No, there may be some minor adjustments that'll come up in the next couple of weeks, but that won't affect the upcoming meetings.
Yeah, I had a question on the Jane Hague visit, 10 minutes, is that all we're gonna give her? Do we, I mean, we don't get a visit from her very often.
Typically, that's all she asks for. I mean, you can offer her more. You can do whatever you want, we put in 10 because that's all they ever ask for. If she stays 20, it's your clock.
We could afford the extra 10.
What is, where's the parking on the Mercer's, what happened to that?
Oh, I believed it was on here.
Don't see it offhand.
Okay, neither do I, I thought it was on here. It is on the work plan, so it will be done. It will be done.
Where have I heard that before?
There's also, I'm trying, what do we, do we talk about something else on the work plan at the retreat?
The North Star.
It's on there.
We're bringing, we're bringing back the Seward Lake Line, project savings.
Well, Rich has not had an opportunity to add anything to the work plan since Saturday.
That's correct. One other question, so, given that Councilmember Grady and myself will both be gone on July 5th, and I'll be gone on the 18th, would it be acceptable to others to move the discussion of the Lake Line Fund allocation to August? I'd like to be available for that conversation.
Before you weigh in on that, staff would be perfectly willing to do that if the timing of things allows that. I'm being obtuse here, but intentionally.
Yeah, it's kind of up in the air, but let's, we can talk about it later in the week in terms of the timing on that, Bruce. So, for no other comments or questions on the schedule, we've got board appointments as per Jim's memo of dated tonight, and the appointments were on the backside of this salmon-colored piece of paper, and in front of you are some corrections and highlighted, the second column, the terms, though, it's the same schedule, same people, same positions, only the terms are corrected and they're highlighted in yellow on the piece you have in front of you, so I'd entertain a motion to approve the board and commission appointments.
Before we make that motion, if I could, have we not in the past had an opportunity to see resumes of candidates for these positions, and have a little bit of knowledge before we're asked to make a decision? I'm just feeling a little bit lost here that I have names, but I know, I know not the first thing about the folks who are, that I would be voting on.
If I can interrupt, due to the mayor's medical happenings of the last few weeks, that is the reason why. Usually what happens is the recommendations are given to the, to the mayor, he is then asked the council liaisons to the boards and commissions for their thoughts and inputs, but due to the fact that he has been a little incapacitated, we have not done that this year. One of the issues is, is we have a lot of vacancies on the boards and commissions, and so staff and those boards are anxious to get new members on, so, yes.
So, Ally pointed that out to me, and I went to the mayor and said, they need some appointments right away, Mr. Mayor, and so he advanced these just in the last week. I don't know what to tell you. If you wanted to wait and see resumes, you could...
Like I, like the memo says, they're all on file in my office, and, you know, the packets went out last Friday, so, or Thursday, so I, I'm happy to, for the sake of saving paper and time, is why they are not copied for you.
Bruce, the, the issue you just teed up a minute ago is the timing, and unfortunately, you're gone the 5th, and...
I certainly wouldn't, I wouldn't ask that this way until August, that clearly makes no sense.
Okay.
But it's, I mean, it looks like, these are all new appointments, right? This isn't, this isn't all the numbers of these...
If you look between the two columns, you can see...
I'm sorry, not new appointments, but, yeah, these are, these are the appointments. I mean, this isn't a list of everybody on the council, or on these commissions.
No, these are the positions that are either up, that are expired, or are vacant, that need to be.
Okay, Ally, can we assume that where there shows a vacancy, for instance, the Arts Council, on the last column, the right-hand column, Arts Council and Youth and Family Services, that there's a shortage of applicants?
Exactly.
So, then we really should focus on Design Commission, Planning Commission. On the Planning Commission, Steve Marshall and Brian Cairns are reappointments, and the new member there would be Richard Weinman. On the Design Commission, are all three of those new members?
Suzanne Foster is the one reappointment, and the other two are new appointments.
Would, would those two others, John Anderson and Tammy Surlett, are to fill vacancies?
So, so, the other part I want to make, so there are actually a total of 20, 20 positions here that are getting filled, so it's a, it's a big number, but L, I think, right to focus it in on just those that are new and in positions that were contentious, I guess, in the sense of multiple people applying for them, and so that just boils it down. So for the Planning Commission, were there others who were not?
Yeah, there's eight other applicants.
Eight other applicants.
The Design Commission had four other applicants.
Would you please PDF them to me, just for curiosity's sakes?
Sure.
Could, would, so, would, well, I would...
So, staff, staff looked through all these applications, and they made a recommendation to the mayor, and then the mayor, as, as per the city code, the mayor makes the recommendation to the council, and you confirm that. And I understand in the past, the mayor has asked each of the council liaisons to also weigh in on the applicants, but this year just didn't allow for that.
Well, I was gonna say, I would certainly suggest that Arts Council, where we still have a vacancy, we'd say, by all means, and the Youth and Family Services Advisory Board, where we still have vacancies, by all means. The others, I just, I would be curious what other folks think.
Can we go a step further, Bruce, in your mind here, on the Planning Commission, I think Steve Marshall and Brian Cairns are known quantities.
Agreed, yeah.
So maybe we just hold the, the final, the other third for the Planning Commission. And on the, on the, maybe on the Design Commission, but they need members, too, I mean, in terms of their moving along with their workload.
Do you have quorum issues, Design Commission?
All right, so that...
All right, I'm, I'm gonna just back off on this, then. I, I'll be supportive of this.
Okay, so, is there a motion to approve the mayor's recommended appointments to boards and commissions?
I move that we go ahead with Mayor Peirman's recommendations for the boards and commission appointments for 2000, well, '12 to '15.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so, council member reports. Why don't we start at your end, Mr. Mike Searle?
Okay, thank you. I actually have a report this time, and I attended a RAC meeting, Renton Airport Advisory Committee last week, and, and they're real excited about production of 737s, as we all are in the region, up to two, maybe two a day. Some other things, the Rainier Flight Instructor School moved from Boeing Field over to Renton. From my perspective, that's good for the island, those type of aircraft, that they don't have a big noise footprint. Some other things that might not be so good, which I'm very concerned about, is ProFlight, they have finished their renovation, they have two additional corporate jets coming onboard, owners not disclosable, but, so, that's additional traffic that you'll see from those corporate jets, which I think are the root of a lot of complaints that we get on the island, so beware. Although there is, one of the private jets is a brand-new private jet, which has the new supposedly quiet jet engines, as, that sounds like an axomorun to me, but we'll see what happens with that. So, again, they're, they're still in the process of making that jet, but that'll, two additional jet, two additional corporate jets at the Renton, Renton location. Another missed opportunity, Renton is one of 10 airports that the FAA is financing to do a sustainability management plan, they're gonna use this for other airports around, and it's kind of a missed opportunity, if you recall, about baselining our noise here on Mercer Island. And I, I still hope that's not a dead thing that we, we look at in the future, but it's a missed opportunity because the sustainability management plan will put a value on that type of externality. And that's an externality that hits the island, but that we don't have a way to document as input into the Renton Sustainability Plan, that'll be used as a basis throughout the, throughout the country. So, in future, at our next planning session, expect me to tee that up again, that we should baseline our noise or lack of noise, because yesterday it was two additional corporate jets, and 737 going through the ceiling with production. It very well could be a different scenario, i.e. 737 decreasing a bit, and corporate jets, more and more corporate jets going over to Renton. That's all I have, thank you.
Just briefly, I sit on the Governor's EV Task Force, we submitted a grant application to Department of Energy a week before last for a half million dollars, with the hopes that that would then help us complete a roadmap of the entire state, including Mercer Island, where all the EV, electric vehicle charging stations would go. The other key component of this is it sets up a, kind of a tier of cities, then, which would then compete for another $200 million in Department of Energy's grant funds for hard equipment, so for cars, more charging stations. So to what extent we can be successful with this round, get the roadmap completed, it'll make it more attractive for us at, in Mercer Island and other surrounding cities to be able to acquire additional funds for electric cars, trucks, and charging stations.
Mike, as worthy as a goal as that is, and all the budget realities we're having, I mean, do you see these grants ever drying, or drying up in the near future? Are they just gonna keep on coming?
No, we, at the federal level, are going through some significant budget cut analyses, as you can imagine, for the next five years, so it's, that's why we are so interested in, you know, to what extent we could be competitive with this couple rounds. I don't see, you know, the funding continuing, so.
But this $200 million's been authorized and appropriated, then?
It's currently in the, or Department of Energy's budget, so it, it has not been officially released yet, but it's in their budget.
Bruce?
ETP meeting, East Side Transportation Partners meeting, more talk of metro bus service being at, at risk going forward because of county budget cuts. There is now, of course, teed up this idea of a vehicle tab fee for two years, and the county is going to be wrestling with whether that goes onto the ballot, or whether they deal with that themselves. But Mercer Islanders who care about their bus service would be doing well, I think, to keep an eye on what's going on, because cuts are very likely coming in bus service throughout the region, and Mercer Island, I don't think is immune to those challenges that we face.
Something that Councilmember Hague might...
Might be a good question to be putting to Councilmember Hague, yes. Secondly, last weekend, Emmanuel Church wrapped up its 22 Ways Carbon Challenge, big thank you to the folks there who did that, and to the folks who organized it as well. Over 200 different actions taken by that group, and I wanted to say a big thank you to them. And the Farmers Market's been running for two weeks now, too. They opened with a real bang a week ago, and then had a little bit less ideal weather this past weekend, but they are open and running, and I'd encourage everybody to get out there and buy some food, some fresh stuff, and they got three different ice cream vendors at this point, and that seemed to be a hit on the first day, so come on out to the Farmers Market.
Jane? Jane? Nothing to report on, but I am looking forward to going to the, the Association of Washington Cities Conference tomorrow, in fact, so I'll maybe have something to report on that. And I also did thank you, L, want to remind everyone of the fireworks cruise to watch the Summer Celebration Fireworks Cruise, sponsored by the Mercer Island Chamber of Commerce and the Mercer Island Sister City Association, $50, get on the Historic Virginia V, which is a treat in itself, desserts, and...
Gourmet dinner included?
Well, gourmet desserts, yes.
Thank you for bringing that up, and I want to thank Bruce from Park and Rec for putting this together, because a friend of mine, Mike McQuade, he and I were at a fundraiser for the Moore Foundation, we got to talking about, well, what can we do, because he's on the board for the Virginia V, and so connections were made, and Bruce really followed up with it and did a stellar job, so I was really happy to see that.
The Chamber of Commerce. Well, it was also instrumental in helping bring all these things together, and you caught my email, Farmers Insurance, fireworks, so say something nice to farmers next time you get...
Wonderful. Okay, I guess we're adjourned.